And thank you, Matt, for starting the recording. Um, that said, moving on, minutes of the previous meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderman, Alderman Mattis moved to approve, Alderman Davis seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't oppose.
I want to make a connection.
Oh, sorry, Alderman, correction.
Um, I believe that the person who talked about the, um, Rutland County, um, the, the helping, whatever the COVID-19 help thing. It says, uh, it was Dina Goldberg who came to talk, but I swear it was Jenny Gartner.
Indeed, it was, and that was my motion, too. That was my team.
Jenny Gartner.
Yeah, J E N N I E.
Uh, Goldberg?
Jenny Gartner.
Gartner.
Gartner. Okay.
Any other corrections to the minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from previous meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We are on to outside the rail. Commissioner Wenberg, I believe that you wanted to speak from outside the rail.
Ask if he's out there.
Can you hear?
Commissioner Wenberg, I see you speaking, but I can't hear you.
I have, I have two ways to mute my line, and if I don't unmut both of them, bad things happen. Is there an echo? Okay, good.
Yeah, there was.
Okay, great.
Better now.
I want to thank, uh, President Wickham for, uh, giving me the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. Um, because of all of the changes and everything else going on in terms of our lives, and especially the way you folks are operating now, um, with the new board and the creation of the new committees, um, it has been a little while since we've had an update regarding the, uh, status of the utility billing and meter, uh, upgrade program, and I wanted to give you a quick update on that. Um, also, uh, for the public as well. Um, basically, there are three sections I want to, three issues I want to cover, and I did send a memo out this morning covering these issues. Um, but this will provide an opportunity for questions. Um, first of all, on the meter installations, um, about 90% of the 6,300 meters in the system have all been replaced. The remaining ones tend to be in the commercial, uh, larger meter, commercial, uh, businesses. And then there are a number of, uh, folks who, uh, have yet to make appointments. But we also have a situation because of the COVID-19 that we've suspended, um, uh, doing meter replacements for the time being, obviously. And so what we're doing, instead of, um, making appointments and scheduling them and going out and making those, uh, change outs for the month of April, um, we're having customers call and get on a list. And we put them on a list and we'll call them. We have a few appointment schedules for May. Hopefully, we'll be in a situation where we can honor those. And hopefully by May, we'll, uh, or in May, we will be able to restart scheduling them again. So, um, we're treating people who call and request an appointment, uh, and we just put them on a list, we'll call them when, uh, we can, uh, as though they've done everything they need to do in order to replace the meter relative to their billing and all the rest of that. So that's how we're handling that. Hopefully, we'll get back to that relatively soon. Um, on the billing system situation, um, we've, the treasurer's office and the business office and Public Works have really had quite a year. Um, we've, uh, completed a transition from the former system, which was called Advanced Utility Systems, to, uh, Muni Billing, which is our new system. Actually, last week, that was completed. We've actually gone through three transitions in a year, which nobody should be required to do, but, um, our people have managed to pull it off with, uh, quite frankly, minimal disruption to our customers, which, uh, enormous credit belongs to, uh, the folks in City Hall who have done that. Um, we completed the billing for November and through February, uh, at Advanced Utility Systems, which was the platform that Fathom had used, but we had to move because they closed. We had to move to our own, uh, space on their platform. And they gave us four months to figure out what we wanted to do on, in the long term. And we chose, uh, Muni Billing, which you folks had previously approved, and that was completed last week. We're working out the bugs. We have some time to do that. Um, it was a tremendous amount of work. I want to specifically thank, um, a DPW business manager, Gail Garuso, treasurer Markowski, and assistant treasurer Homequist for the exceptional work and the long hours they've put in to make this as smooth, uh, a period to go through this as is it possibly could have been. I believe that's, uh, that's not overstating it. The next billing cycle will be done on the Muni Billing platform, and we'll be using their, um, printing, uh, system, which is built into their system. So our invoices will look different. And, uh, that's a little ways away. But when, uh, a little while before, uh, those bills go out, we'll reach out to customers and give them, uh, good information so they'll hopefully anticipate the different appearance. There'll be no changes, um, affecting them otherwise. It'll just look differently. Um, you know, everything else will be the same. Um, I want to particularly take a few minutes also talking about the remaining issues. We've, we've gone with a bunch of vendors, and you folks have approved a, uh, not a short list of different vendors to replace, uh, the services that we had previously, uh, been getting from Fathom. And we've done that, um, I think, pretty effectively and with an awful lot of support from most of those vendors. There is only one right now that is, um, really outstanding. Everything else is settled and, um, and, you know, and it's working well. But the one that is outstanding is the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Services Provider, and that is Itron. Um, they were a subcontractor to Fathom, and, um, they are the ones that provided the radio systems that communicate between the meters on each individual, uh, property with their, their fixed base network, and then send all that information to the cloud where we can, uh, review it and generate bills, et cetera, et cetera, from that. Um, you may recall that, uh, a year ago, or a little less than a year ago, it was, it was a real mess with the billing when a huge number of erroneous bills were sent out, and they had to tell everybody, "Don't pay those bills. We're going to send out, um, replacement bills." And that was, uh, the, uh, really a major, major problem. That problem was caused by faulty Itron equipment. Um, and from the very beginning of this project, the Itron network has never operated anywhere close to the promised level of performance. This has resulted in a large number of estimated bills going out even this last cycle because we cannot get reliable reads through this radio network. And that's not an acceptable situation. Uh, there are several, several hundred that are still, um, not communicating properly. So, um, these problems with this equipment and the software are continuing to this day. Now, I believe it's largely because Itron has refused to take responsibility for the failure of their system to perform adequately or to provide technicians here onsite to troubleshoot the issues. Uh, that's not to say many efforts haven't, have been put in place. We've put, we've put lots of hours with our consultant and with our own people to try to correct these things with Itron, um, support, remote support, but it just hasn't worked. And we really need them to step up and honor their warranties and support our system. Now, when Fathom announced that they were going out of business, Itron was quick to provide us with assurance that they would work with us. They wouldn't turn the lights off, and they haven't. Uh, and they work with the city, city to get us through this. But for unknown reasons, they've refused to provide a scope of work with pricing to correct the network issues until last week. It's four and a half months after we started requesting this. Um, and we have been getting assurances all along, but we've seen very little performance. And they've still refused, at least thus far, to provide pricing for their ongoing services that the city's going to need once the system is actually functioning correctly. So, the terms that they have given us, which I can't get into because it's a negotiation matter, I can't get into it in, in open session, but the terms that they have recently communicated last week in this scope of work are wholly unacceptable to the city. So it's a great disappointment. Um, we do, um, hope that we'll be able to negotiate something acceptable and that we'll come up with something reasonable and working with them. Um, but I thought it was important that we bring this to your attention and to the attention of the public that we're extremely frustrated. Uh, Itron is a very big company, and we're a very small community in their universe. But we, we certainly cannot explain the degree to which they have, in the delays in getting basic, um, documents and things to us. And we, we, it's just inexplicable. So, um, the city attorney, uh, the city treasurer and I, um, will be having conversations with them, hopefully again this week, um, to go over their, uh, proposal. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to make some progress and get them here as quickly as possible to, um, correct these issues. Uh, but, um, the document that they sent us is not one that I would ever recommend the board approve. Um, and, uh, hopes have been somewhat dashed repeatedly by, um, their behavior. So that's basically it. There's a lot of good news. An enormous amount of good work has been done. A lot of problems have been solved, and a lot of progress has been made. But this, this piece here is extremely frustrating and, um, and, uh, we've, we've, we've really sort of reached our limit in terms of what we think, uh, we can tolerate with this.
Alderman Clifford, you had a question?
Jeff, who are you talking to at Itron?
Um, well, there's several people, uh, two in particular. Um, Mark Champagne is the vice president, and, uh, Kabul Karin is a sales rep for this, uh, part of the country. Uh, there's also a project manager who is or would be, I'm not sure of the status, uh, assigned to our project, a woman by the name of Lori Olive. Um, Mark, I have to say, has always said the right things. He's been very good to work with. He's been totally reassuring and saying that, uh, consistently for four and a half months that they will be with us, that they'll make it right. We'll have a first-rate system. But there's no progress, and that's the frustration. And again, it took four and a half months just to get a document that describes the scope of work and a price to fix it.
Thank you.
Alderman Torrey.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, two quick questions. Um, Jeff, you said that there's still seven hun, several hundred, uh, meters that are inaccurate. Are they the same several hundred? Do the people know that it's them? Um, are we, have they been identified?
Yes, but it's not the meters. I want to, and I know this is kind of a fine point for a lot of people. The meters are fine. The meters are doing, they're, they're accurately, uh, recording water usage, et cetera. It's the communication system that connects the meter to the radio device on the outside of the house. And too many of those are not functioning properly. And, uh, multiple efforts have been made with Itron's remote support, but to little effect. Some progress has been made, but way too many of them are still not operating properly. So when we have the opportunity, we go and try to read them multiple times. Sometimes we might catch one at a moment when it seems to be functioning. Um, technically, they're supposed to be working through the fixed base network. Uh, only a minority of them are actually communicating with the fixed base network. A majority of them have to be read, uh, mobily, that is to say, um, from a physical location near the property, near the house. And, um, in those cases where we cannot get into the property to read the, the number off the meter head, and we're not going in at this point at all, um, uh, and we can't actually read the meter directly visually, um, we have to send an estimated bill.
So, but you're working with those people. They know who they are.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but, you know, some, when you get an estimated bill, uh, one quarter out of, out of five or six, that's understandable. Those kinds of things can happen. But when you get two or three in a row, we're getting very, we're, we're working out in an area where we don't really know. And we need to be able to get those meter reads. And we certainly don't have the staff to go into each house and read each one. We've actually asked, since the COVID thing, we've started asking people who are getting estimated bills and want to challenge them, and I don't blame them. Um, you know, go downstairs. We instruct them on how to wake up the meter, um, take a photograph, you know, like, uh, with a smartphone of the reading on the meter. Send it to us, and we can adjust the bill based on a real reading. It's, it's way too much work for our customers, and it's crazy for us. And the system shouldn't, shouldn't be in a situation a year after it started installation that we have to do these kinds of things.
Sure. And my second question is, so are other municipalities experiencing the same experience? The same, um, troubles with Itron?
Not to my knowledge, um, although they have admitted that there was a, there is another community, I don't know which one. They didn't give me the name, um, that is also having difficulty because their system was installed in the same way that Fathom installed this one. Um, Itron is quick and, and, and with some justification, um, to blame Fathom for many of our problems. And while the source or the root of the problem may have been the way Fathom went about it, um, there's no explanation or defense that I can give for why Itron hasn't stepped up to the plate. We've been begging them to give us a price for four months. Tell me what it's going to cost. And they wouldn't give us a price until, like, last week. Um, so it's extremely frustrating. And so anyway, the point is, um, they indicate that, uh, there, there's another community that's having some problems. I don't know if they're the same. But what we haven't been able to do is to get them to step up to the plate and correct them. And we do know that a large number, um, over a thousand of their, um, radio devices that go on the outside of the house were shipped to us and installed, and they were faulty. We know that. They've admitted that. They had, uh, firmware bugs in them, and some of them were not configured properly for our system. And so that's clearly not Fathom's fault. That's Itron's fault.
Alderwoman Mattis?
Um, yeah, Jeff, is there, given the system that we have and the equipment that we have, is there an alternate vendor that can do the work that Itron is currently doing?
There are multiple, uh, competitors. Um, in fact, we had several of them, uh, bid on our system, uh, back when Fathom was putting the project together. So they're very familiar with our system. They'd done, uh, propagation studies and so forth. They've done a lot of the homework. Um, Itron wasn't the least expensive, but they had the best package of, uh, technology for us. Um, and that was why we chose them. They had the leak detection advantage, which nobody else had. Um, the, uh, in, in order to be able to know what our options are, we have, um, within the last month, uh, reached out to some of those competitors and are seeking proposals, uh, from, um, them, um, to, uh, either, you know, modify what Itron has done, and hopefully, uh, if Itron's not able or willing to do it, perhaps a competitor can do it, or in the worst case, tear it all out and replace it with a new system.
Thanks.
Alderman Garuso?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, uh, Alderwoman Mattis answered a couple of the questions that I guess the site, Itron, is not the only company. And you run through again, because I'm new at this. What is it that they do? What, what, what game do they play? Is it from reading the meters to, to doing the billing?
Well, actually, yeah, it's, it's an amazing jigsaw puzzle of different technologies and vendors that all have to play nicely together to make this stuff work. That was the advantage of Fathom, was that they were responsible for making it all work.
Right, but, but Itron does what? They, what do they do?
What Itron does is they take through a wire information from the meter, which is made by Neptune. We've been using Neptune meters for over 20 years. And that wire goes out to a gray box that's almost always mounted on the outside of the house, and that's the Itron box. So the Itron takes the information from the meter. It stores it. And then, twice a day, for several milliseconds each time, it transmits that information to a fixed antenna network, which is already installed in the city. Those are Itron, that's the Itron Fixed Base Network. And then those units, they're called CGRs or, or gateways. It's basically a router. It's, this is like Wi-Fi, so it's a router. And those routers then store that information and then send it through the cellular telephone network, um, up to the cloud. And then Itron takes all that data and, uh, creates through their, um, online, highly secure, extremely highly secure. That's another advantage of Itron. Extremely highly secure system, um, analytics and information so that the customers can go onto the portal and see how much water they used hour by hour last night. We haven't got that, obviously, because we haven't got Itron up to snuff. But that is one, one of the products we're supposed to get. We would have access to this information. And then when the billing time comes, um, that data from Itron gets sent over to what will be, what is Muni Billing, this, the billing company. And then they take, ingest all that data, generate bills, and then they produce the bills and send them out after a lot of analysis and review by our people. And, and ultimately, it'll be our people, but they're reviewing it now, of course, as well. So, um, Itron is a critical link between the meter, the information, which, again, the meters are great, between the meter and the technology that allows us to send out the bills and read the meters and all of that. It's that radio link in the middle. And so there's, there's about a half million dollars of Itron hardware installed here. Um, and, um, some of it, a third of it, is working perfectly fine. And, uh, two-thirds of it is problematic. And that's what we're struggling with at this point.
Well, that, that sounds like a big problem to me, is that only if two-thirds of it isn't working. But we used to have, because I met one of the readers at a credit union one day. He was telling me that there's a, we used to have a handheld thing that they could just aim it at the house.
Right.
And from a truck, and just read the meters like that. What happened to that?
Well, we still have that for the 10% of the meters that haven't been changed out. And we have a similar device that we can use with the Itron. That's how we read, uh, most of the Itron, um, units. They don't communicate with their fixed base network. You know, the one, a third do. And then, uh, a huge number don't, but they will communicate with the mobile device.
So you said earlier that we had houses we couldn't read.
And then there's another group, several hundred, that we can't read at all. And then we have to either sleuth those out. It's an enormous amount of field work, a lot of phone calls. And then sometimes it's a, you know, a hassle for the homeowner.
Well, my opinion on this, and I only know what I've, I've experienced with it. The only company I know in the water business, I think it's a little over 125 years they've been in it, was Rutland City. And I just don't get why this is all farmed out and why, why such a mess. I, I think it's confusing, and I, I think, too, you're burying a lot of the problems. I, this is a mess, and, uh, I, I don't even understand it. We'll have to someday talk about it in committee, but, um, if you have two-thirds of something not working, it's a failure. That's all my questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Davis?
Thank you. Jeff, I think my concerns are a little bit like Sammy's to the point that, um, in your documentation, you talk about problems with this equipment and software continue to this day. So we just had a bill run, um, quarter bills just went out. So do we feel that those bills have integrity? Do we feel that they're valid? Do we feel that, that they were properly read? Um, with the software issue, if two-thirds of them are not functioning?
Well, again, when I say not functioning, not functioning according to what we paid for. And that means that they would all be communicating with this fixed network. We would get two downloads every single day of, of the water usage throughout the system. And, um, only about a third of them are actually doing that. Um, the other ones can be read, with the exception of a few hundred, which have issues that we have attempted to solve. But without Itron's help, I don't think we will ever do it. And, um, they are read by driving down the street. So we're getting readings. It's just that we are not getting the advantage of the investment that we made. We're not getting the benefit. You know, we didn't have to spend a half million dollars on all this equipment to drive by and check readings. That's what we had previously. We need this to get to a fixed base network so that we can read the meters at our desks so that we can answer questions without having to send people out in the field to get downloads from the location, ring them back, and then, you know, have a subsequent phone call. These are the benefits of the Advanced Metering Infrastructure System, and we're not getting those benefits because Itron's piece is not functioning properly. Are we getting good, uh, meterings? If you've got a bill that says estimated reading, that's because we couldn't trust the reading or we didn't get one that we got from the system. If you've got a bill that says, "This is what your usage was last time. This is what it's reading now, and this is your usage." It doesn't say estimated reading, then that's a reliable bill. Now, there may be one or two that are weird for one reason or another. Um, we've tried to scrub those out, but that happens with every system. That happens every cycle. There's always a number that are like, "Okay, that's wacky. Let's figure out what happened there. Call the office." We scrub those out before, but there's always a few that squeak through. But the real problem here is, if you got a bill that has readings on it, uh, we, we're comfortable standing behind those readings. But if you have any questions, call the office, send us an email. We'll check into it for sure. Um, but there are way too many of these estimated bills. And the only reason we've got so many is because, you know, this, that's part of the system isn't functioning at all.
Alderman Garuso?
Yeah, Jeff, 30 years ago, I was on the board, and, uh, there was a different, uh, Public Works Commissioner and a different mayor, and I don't think that mayor would have stood for this. What do you think we need to do to correct it? Because usually stopping payments will get attention. Um, what's your suggestion?
Well, uh, for what it's worth, Itron hasn't sent us a bill yet. Uh, they've provided service to us for the last four and a half months, and we haven't paid them anything. Um, so if they had sent us a bill, we would have that conversation for sure. Um, but, uh, this is an untenable situation. It has to get fixed. And so I just wanted you folks to know that, uh, we're a bit, almost at our wits' end. The, the city attorney, uh, city treasurer, uh, my business manager and I are, um, going to be responding to their, um, their scope of work and their, their offer. Um, and they are, they're developing some information to answer questions that we have, and we hope to get together this week. Um, and quite frankly, if the scope of work and the price had been something that I was comfortable with, I probably wouldn't be giving you this briefing right now. It would be a different briefing, or it would be an executive session getting close to asking for your approval. But it's so far away from what we need. Um, I, I felt I had to give you folks a heads up that this is not heading in what I would consider a comfortable direction, and...
And I'm not trying to beat you up, Jeff. I'm, I'm trying to help, and it sounds like quite a, a quagmire here, whatever that we're in. And, and when you have two-thirds of something not working, but I guess when they send a bill, that'll get their attention. And I would recommend we not pay it, um, until we get some attention. It's worked in other, worked at my church, uh, it's been done before, so.
Yeah.
Not beating you up, I'm just disappointed.
Yeah, that's what we did with Fathom, so it, it sort of worked there.
Put them under.
So Sam, if I could, this is the mayor. I, I could guarantee you that until we get some sort of satisfaction, there isn't going to be anything that's been paid, that's going to get paid. Because this has been, uh, you know, untenable situation for all of us. And we've worked through a whole slew of issues to get to the point where we are right now. And this is the last piece that needs to be put in place. And unfortunately, it's a, it's a vital piece, but we will get there.
Sam, if I could just, if I could just tell you something again, I, I don't think it's, uh, I'm betraying anything by saying this in public session. Um, and when we were, when we were going over the reviewing the, um... And when we were, when we were going over the reviewing, the scope of work and the price, we were just trying to understand it, not really giving them a tremendous amount of feedback. But I, I told Mr. Champagne that our position would be that we don't pay them a dime until the system is functioning exactly as designed and promised. So whatever price we agree to, whatever scope of work we agree to, they don't get anything until they prove that this thing can function. And his response to me, as I said, he's always been very good, his response to me was, that's absolutely right. I'm not going to ask you to pay anything until we can prove that you have a first-class AMI system. And I said, okay, we're on the same page. But there are other issues and those are the issues that are outstanding.
All right. Well, thank you, and I'm glad to know you're working on it. If I can help in any way, let me know. Thank you.
Alderman Gillum?
Hi Jeff, I, I agree with you, but I'm having a little concern here about customer service. That's the bottom line here. I'm worried about our customers out there not getting the full boat they've paid for. So how long is this going to take to get them to the table?
Well, you could say that they're at the table after four and a half months now. I'm hopeful that it won't take a similar length of time to at least either come to an agreement or determine that we can't. And then figure out what our, our other options might be. And I would think that, you know, within a matter of a few weeks, I know Matt could perhaps chime in here, we would be able to make a recommendation one way or the other. But I would dread, and I'll tell you, I've got people in my business office that are ready to hurl themselves from the top of the old hose tower at City Hall if we have to go through another bill cycle like the one we just completed. The amount of work that all of our staff had to go through, including and especially the guys in the field, the meter techs, chasing this stuff down and double checking, triple checking, going out and trying to read the meter three, four, or five times to try to get a reading so that we might be able to send a bill that doesn't say estimated on it. And then verifying the information that we got and scrubbing it so that we weren't sending out bills that were wacky. That, that is not something we ever want to repeat if we can avoid it.
Any other questions for Commissioner Lindberg? Seeing none, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll definitely keep, we'll definitely keep you posted and the matter is in committee. So Paul, when you have committee meetings, we can give you regular updates when you resume those.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. We are still outside the rail. I believe we have a Jason McCullough, I may pronounce that wrong, here from the Mountain Times to speak to us.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you guys so much for taking the time to listen to me for a couple of minutes. What I'm about to talk about is not as technical as what you guys were just talking about. It's basically, the, right now, we're working, we're working with Roseanne Kennedy from the State Attorney's Office in an effort in pulling together a COVID-19 Rutland Resource Guide. Basically, her office has put together this about an eight-page document right now. You know, I'm, I'm sure in the next couple of days, it'll get to about 12. The information this guy has been obtained in a coordinated effort with a lot of different agencies and organizations like the Rutland Police, the Department of Childrens and Families, Food Assistance Programs, Protective Services, Legal Resources, School District. Basically, what they've asked us to do is see if we can get this information out to the community, you know, to as many people as they can. So we, Mountain Times, in partnership with the State Attorney's Office, would like to print and distribute this guide to as many residents as we can. There's a cost to that, which we are, you know, we're, we're not in, in great shape these days, as you guys can imagine, like a lot of other people. But we're looking for a little support from the town of Rutland, City of Rutland. And I've been, you know, reaching out to some other agencies and people to help out and we've gotten a good response. And I just wanted to, you know, bring it to your attention. So, you know, we're looking for some funds to be specific. We're looking to print anywhere from 20,000 to 60,000 copies of this and distribute it. And, you know, we're not asking for anybody to flip the whole bill, but just a small portion of it. And that's why I'm speaking tonight, so.
So Mr. Chairman, this is the mayor. I have had an opportunity to talk to Jason late last week. I've seen the resource guide. It's a tremendous guide and information piece that I really do believe would be a tremendous asset for the community, not just for ours, but for the whole area. I have agreed and would be more than happy to send a little money his way, certainly not to bear the whole cost, but to pitch in on our end. I believe I have the ability to do that. But I wanted to have Jason come in and explain this to you personally from his point of view and hear from me that I think that in, in these, in these times, the more information we can get out to people, the better. We're looking at a whole array of things that we're doing. I'm going to talk a little bit about that under Communications from the Mayor. But I think this is just another avenue that we can get this resource guide, which has the names, numbers, and of a whole host of services that people are continually looking for as we go through this whole COVID issue. So Jason had mentioned something around the area of four to 5,000 that he thinks it's going to cost to, to print it. I'm not sure if it's still, still the same, but I'm, I'm willing to pitch in a thousand dollars to, to get the ball rolling on behalf of the city. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Any questions?
I think we may have lost our leader.
All right, thank you guys. I'm sorry, Paul, but I lost my video. All right, I am back.
You can't, you can't see my hand up?
Alderman Gillum, go ahead.
Thank you. I did see that list. I'm a little concerned it's not complete. There's a lot of churches that do a lot of work in this area should be on that list, especially if they're soup kitchens or they're doing something with food to feed the community. And some of the food shelves from like West Rutland and Pittsburgh are not in it. So I'm concerned that the list is not complete. But hopefully that guys will make that happen.
Yeah, so I, I agree with you and, you know, the, the, the staff of the State Attorney's Office is working really hard on trying to get as much information in there as possible. As you can imagine, there are a lot of resources out there, so they're trying to, you know, they're, they're, they're trying their best to put as many as they can in there. You know, today, I've had some success raising a little bit of money, so I think we are going to try to step in and, and help them out as well, but I just, you know, so, so this is a working document, but it's a, it's, it's kind of a catch because we don't want to wait too long to get it out. But at the same time, we're trying to get, you know, all the information in there as we can. So I'll definitely work with them directly and some of our staff will work with them on trying to make that, you know, the, the resource more complete. But just know that, that it's not going to be as complete as anybody wants it to be, obviously, because there's always going to be something missing in it. But I think getting it out on a timely basis is also, you know, it's just, it's a balance, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Alderman Garuso?
Yes, I want to say hi to Jason. We are hopefully friendly competitors and not competing in, in, in this arena. But when he mentioned in conjunction with the Rutland County State's Attorney's Office, I would think the fire chief, police chief, civil defense director, also the fire chief would be the place I would go and maybe even the medical center. But I would think that the fire chief and police chief, what is that new committee we got now, the, the, dealing with this? I don't have it in front of me, I've been looking for it, but that's where I would.
Emergency Operations Center.
There you go. That's it. And that's what I would do. And I think things are, I just was watching on the news before I came to this, is that they're, they're starting to apex now. And you better hurry if you're going to get this thing out. But I still think that, like Alderman Gillum says, there's searches and, and food shelves and a whole lot of people. And I haven't looked at your thing, but if you want to make it closer to complete, you better get to some, some better resources than the State Attorney's Office. I would think they'd be great for criminal law or whatever, but my suggestion is get with the chiefs.
Let me just, let me, let me just be clear that I'm not the one that pulled this together. They, they, they are the ones that have pulled this together and it came across my desk. You know, and they, they've, they've included a lot of information in here that, that, you know, there, it's, it's, you know, their time has been, it's been used researching and looking into these different organizations that really can't, you know, publicize this themselves in some capacities because they don't have any funding. So, but again, you know, we're here to help and, and I'll take that feedback back to them and I'll, I'll definitely talk to them. But this is, I just want to be clear that this is their guide and we're just trying to help distribute it and get it out.
And, and.
And we will try to help them as best we can.
Shame, shame, shame on them. I've been in the business 42 years and a lot of it in the radio business. And when you have an organization like that that calls on one entity, there's me and the Rutland Herald and a whole lot of other organizations that collectively could get this out to a mass audience for a hell of a lot less money. And shame, shame on Ms. and her State's Attorney's Office for contacting one entity. And when there's all these other communication organizations, including PEG TV, including the TV stations, including the internet, shame, shame, shame. Thank you.
I just, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to, I have to clarify as well that they didn't reach out to me. I was actually being, I was the one that was proactive and reached out to them to try to help them. So they, they had, they had never even heard of me before in my entire life. This document came across my desk. I reached out to them directly and said, how can we help? How can we get this out? So if there's anybody to blame, it's me for not reaching out to PEG TV and the Herald and everybody. So, so you could blame me for that, not, not.
No, I'm not going to blame anyone, just shame on them. And if you were to go to this board for money, if my memory serves me right, you'd have to wait for us to go through the committee and through the process. And it takes a little bit longer. There's a reason the voters and the.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes.
This is not a time for debate. We need to run everything to the chair. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm not trying to deflect. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ryan, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, is it Jason or Chase? Sorry, I didn't hear the name.
My name is Jason, I'm one of the co-publishers of the Mountain Time.
Hello, Jason. Yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I did receive this directly from Shay McGee, who's a victim's advocate at the State Attorney's Office. And it is a really comprehensive document. For those of us who work in the social and health services and are out on the front lines, I think it's very useful and I think it could benefit the community. So just recognizing that it's, yes, it's a work in process, but it is really comprehensive. And it went out to the whole Project Vision listserv. So as all of you, I would imagine, are on that list serve or at least should be, you will see that the police have worked with them on this as well and that there is contact information if you have an entity that you would like to add to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you very much. I appreciate that, Alderman Ryan, I appreciate your thoughts. My take on all of this here from the mayor's offices, it's my job to try to get as much information out to the community as I possibly can. So I brought this to you, not to ask for your permission, but more in the spirit of, so you knew what was going on and you were aware that I was intending on moving forward to help this effort out. And as comprehensive as it can be, I think it's going to help the community and that, that's what needs to be done right now. The community needs to help.
Thank you, Mayor.
I really, yeah, I really appreciate the support and the time and, and also I just, I know this is a volunteer committee and, and you guys are doing, and I really appreciate, you know, everybody's time tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McCullough or Mayor Lair? Alderman Humphrey?
Thanks, President Wickham. I was trying to get a question in the chat there and I couldn't get it. Attorney Blumer did want to ask, is that information going to be available on the internet?
Uh, yeah.
It seems like in progress, it'd be able to be updated quickly that way as well.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a Google Doc right now and our goal is to get it out and, and host it where people, where it can be updated and, and, you know, by a certain amount of people. As everybody knows, information is changing by the hour right now. So we want to make sure that we could update that information live as well.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions from the board from Mr. McCullough or Mayor Lair? Seeing none, thank you for coming, for calling in.
All right, thank you guys so much. Stay safe and be healthy.
We are still outside the rail. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board from outside the rail? All right, hearing none and definitively seeing none, we are moving on now to Communications from the mayor. I'm Mayor Lair.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll try to run through this relatively quickly. These are all COVID-related issues. I wanted to mention that the EOC has been meeting daily, Emergency Operations Center. We, as some of you, maybe most of you have seen up online, we have produced daily press releases and/or videos, trying to get as much information out to the public as possible. We are continuing to explore new and creative ways to get those messages out, including different online platforms. And hopefully, we're going to start getting that up on the city website also. As you may know, Rutland Regional Medical Center has put into motion the creation of a surge site at Spartan Arena. Your fire department has been actively involved in setting up that site. They were down there yesterday afternoon laying down the floor. The Rutland City Fire Department, along with the Rutland County Fire Department and a lot of community volunteers as well as hospital personnel. So that effort is ongoing. Hopefully, we'll never need it, but we have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. Along those lines, again, going back to the EOC, as part of that effort in the Planning Division, we have had Tara Kelly working along with Mike Brookman and Bob Pelletier from the Building and Zoning Office to set up Corcel for the possibility of, and hopefully this never happens, but if a city employee were to come into contact with someone who was COVID positive and that employee does not wish to go home and possibly infect their family, the employee could be isolated for up to 14 days at Corcel. We have set up that building in order to provide that service for any potential happening with a city employee. The facility should be ready very soon, I would say in the next couple of days. Again, that's all about planning. We're hoping that that eventuality does not happen, but it's been a concern that's been raised by several numerous employees and something that we have responded to. And we believe it's the right thing to do to keep our employees safe in the eventuality that that ever happens. City Hall is currently totally locked down now. There is absolutely no access except in, in an emergency. We were, as you might recall, the last time I briefed you, we were allowing folks to come into the clerk's office on an appointment basis to do title searches, that sort of thing. But with the latest directive come down from the governor's office and the, the way it was laid out by the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, it was explicitly made clear that in, in no instance should there be any person-to-person contact in any of these city municipal buildings. I took upon myself today to call up the city of Burlington to see how they were operating their city clerk's office in their building and they're doing the same thing. They're totally locked down. So again, that's to keep everyone safe, not only city employees, but, but also the public. And finally, slightly lighter note, although this is just as important, you might have seen some lawn signs popping up around town. There has been an effort by, and there is going to be an ongoing effort by Mike DePaulitano up at Awesome Graphics. by, uh, uh, Mike DePaulitano up at Office Awesome Graphics, um, in, in concert with a couple of local business owners that are helping to fund this, to hopefully mass produce some of these signs. Uh, again, to, um, target, uh, all the things that are coming down from the health department, uh, as far as, uh, keeping everyone safe. Uh, one message on each one of the signs, whether it be social distancing, stay home if you're sick, uh, wash your hands repeatedly, whatever the, whatever the message is, uh, we're going to try to blanket the, uh, the community as much as we possibly can. And that came, uh, after a phone call I got from a Rutland Regional Medical Center, uh, board member who, um, uh, at their board meeting had been talking about as many different ways as they possibly can to try to get the message out because they were feeling as though many folks in the community were heeding the, the warnings, not everybody was. So if there's an extra effort that we can make to do that, even in the short run, I think that that would be beneficial. Um, and who knows, it might save a life. So, uh, I think that's all I've got. It's all COVID related tonight.
Alderwoman Davis?
Uh, so David, thank you. I really appreciate the, um, information and, uh, your leadership. I, um, see a lot of it from Chief Cullen on Facebook getting, um, all that information out. So much appreciated. But I have a question and it basically, when I was watching, um, the town renews this evening dealing with the city of Burlington, we are going to be in the same predicament with water sewer and property tax bills coming due. You know, and I'm sure Mary can attest to that there are a large amount of people who prefer to come into the office of the treasurer and make those payments. Um, what the, uh, I don't know that, that, uh, you've had a conversation with your department heads or not, but the city of Burlington has deferred those payments until August. Now, I don't know that we can do that because I don't know that cash flow would allow that to happen. The city has to pay its bills, but I think it is something we're going to have to figure out because not everybody's going to pay by credit card. Not everybody's going to pay by sending a check. So I think the public needs to get some direction on what we want to do come May, when these bills are coming due.
So, uh, your point is well taken. Uh, I think that, uh, well, I don't think. I have had this discussion with Mary. I know Mary, you're on here. Uh, we have some concerns about cash flow anyway, even if the, the dates are, um, continued, uh, at the same time. So, um, certainly would take that under consideration, uh, look at all possibilities. Again, getting the communication out to the, uh, public as soon as we possibly can and try to look at, uh, any and all avenues, um, to make sure that we help folks who are in, in a tough situation. At the same time, we still need to be able to, you know, operate the city. So, point well taken.
Alderminutari?
Sorry. Um, and I just wanted to comment on that. Uh, Mary will be presenting her treasurer's report in a little bit, but we had talked earlier, um, of, uh, today about having a committee meeting at the end of April to go over some things. Um, and likely the third quarter report. So we'll have a, uh, an exact kind of figure about what we're looking at, what the finances are looking at. And so we can review and if there's any recommendations that folks like Alderwoman Davis would like to put at that time, I think we'll have, uh, a space to do that well before the May 15th deadline. So we could take that upon ourselves.
Any other questions further?
This is Mary. I just wanted to, um, say that I was, um, actually very surprised, very surprised today in the mail. I bet we received 200 or more payments in the mail on that last water billing. Um, so we have quite a bit of mail to process and, um, I was just surprised with that because I'm feeling like it is going to be difficult for people to make those due dates. So, um, looking at that and also the biggest problem for the towns is you're, you still have the liability for the school payment, which is over $3 million due early June. So cash flow will be something that we'll have to look at.
Alderminutari?
So, uh, Mary, uh, David, um, with the schools, um, I, I know this, I know the state has been doing some relaxation or waivers or whatever, just because of, of the virus and how business isn't as usual, so to speak. So is there a possibility, have we even asked, is there a possibility to delay that payment if necessary?
So that would be a question for the Department of Ed and the Tax Department up there. Uh, we could certainly ask the question. Uh, they are very protective of the Ed Fund. Um, and very concerned about ongoing costs that they continue to have. The school buildings are all shut down, but the schools all are operating, uh, remotely. Uh, my wife included. And so there are still continuing to be costs that are going to be borne by them. So, um, you know, it's a, it's, it's, everything is connected. And, um, for every movement there, there, you know, for every thing you do, there's a, a, for every reaction, there's a reaction. So, um, possibly there is.
Any other questions from Mayor Lair? Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Lair.
You're welcome.
Uh, we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. We have, uh, Alderwoman Ryan's Community and Economic Development Report. Uh, motion to add that to the reports of standing committees.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion seconded. Alder in favor, running, uh, the report to the state. Say aye.
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 Those opposed.
Oh, so.
Could I ask you to make sure? Uh, it's not coming in, uh, red.
Oh, wicked, wicked.
Okay. Sorry about that, guys. Uh, moving on, reports and letters from department heads and officials, Treasurer Markowski, the 2019 audit report.
Thank you. So I'm, I, um, forwarded a copy of the audit report and related letters for the FY 19 audit. Um, there's quite a lot of information. I would, um, like to refer this, this report and management letter and letters to the finance committee to have our auditor, um, Fred Duplessis from Sullivan Powers come in and review the audit report with the board, with the finance committee.
Alderminutari?
Move to send the, uh, FY 19 audit to finance committee.
I'll second.
Have a motion, this is seconded. Is there any debate on that issue? Seeing none, Alder in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we are on now to report sustaining committees, Alderwoman Ryan, Community and Economic Development.
Thank you, President Whitcomb. Um, let me just pull that up real quick. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The Community and Economic Development Committee met virtually on March 31st, 2020 to discuss the Business Incentive and Assistance Program Buy-Up Policy and Application for the Emergency Loan Provision. Committee members present were myself, the Chair, Alderman Sharon Davis, Vice Chair, Chrissy Torrey, Sam Grosso and Michael Talbot. Um, Alderman present were Alderman Paul Clifford, Tom DePoy, Matt Whitcomb, Melinda Humphrey, Rebecca Madison, Bill Gillum. Others present were Treasurer Mary Markowski, Executive Director of the RRA Brennan Duffy, Commissioner of the RRA David Cooper, City Attorney Matt Blumer and Gordon DeShillo from the Rutland Herald. The meeting began at 5:31 PM. Brennan started off the meeting talking about the history of the buy-up loan and economic incentive fund for business expansion and improvement. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the RRA suggested that the buy-up loan pivot and look at providing financial assistance to businesses who are already established. Moreover, the RRA suggested taking $100,000 out of the buy-up current balance of $230,000 and put it into the, into an emergency loan for local businesses who are being affected by COVID-19. The drafted policy for the Emergency Loan Fund included six sections, statement of purpose, uh, eligibility, opportunities and terms criteria, non-compliance termination and in the application process. Brennan went through each section in detail and those present on the call responded with questions, comments, concerns and revisions. Alderman Whitcomb asked about leverage for opportunities and terms. Brennan stated that the repayment plans and other terms are in place and that the RRA does not want it to be a burden for businesses, but an assistance. Alderman Davis talked about timeframe for for possibilities around amending documents to revisit the terms depending on the status of the virus. Alderman Grosso iterated that the emergency loan provision would need to operate case by case and not one size fits all, in which Brennan agreed. Alderman Torrey wanted to look at fine tuning the eligibility and asked about current, currently employed and what exactly that meant. Further, he asked about businesses that are being strategic in their decisions and are furloughing their employees and how the eligibility as written might affect those businesses. There was general discussion regarding the eligibility for existing city businesses who currently employ, quote, "at least two full-time employees, but no more than 50 full-time employees," end quote. Alderman Torrey and Madison advocated for changing the term "full-time employee" to "full-time equivalent" in order to include owner-run and sole proprietor businesses. Many wanted to limit the top end of the eligibility, 50 was too high and recommended that the RRA should find a reasonable number to come back to the board with. A motion was made by Alderman Torrey to accept the emergency buy-up loan provision policy as presented with the changes of removing and changing the language around the number of full-time employees. The motion was seconded by Alderman Davis. The motion passed 5-0 and I so moved. Meeting adjourned at 6:49 PM.
I'll second.
You're muted, Matt. We can't hear you.
Sorry, guys. Alderwoman Madison, I apologize.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I read over the, um, changed document. I still think it's important that we say "full-time equivalent" and the reason being that it's just more fair to businesses that have, um, various numbers of employees, but employ them for different hours. Well, you can have 20 employees, but only 10 full-time equivalent employees. I think that business should be considered, um, eligible for this micro-business loan, um, along with businesses that only have 10 actual employees. So I really want to encourage the board to add "full-time equivalent" to the language. Thank you.
Uh, others?
So Matt, this is Brennan. I don't know. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
You can. Okay. I just wanted to let you know I am out here on the, uh, on the phone, on the call. I'm on the computer here. So I, I could try to provide a little more information about how the, uh, revisions were, were crafted, if that would be helpful to folks.
I think you need to. Yeah, go ahead.
Hearing a sound? Okay. So, so thanks. I, um, I guess what we tried to do here was really capture what we felt the direction of the committee was, which was we wanted to lower the, the low end of this. So any, anyone from a sole proprietor on up would be able to, uh, apply and be eligible for this program. Uh, the low end, which we had started out at 50, uh, was, was, uh, another piece that we wanted to rework. So what we actually found was there is a definition, uh, from the Small Business Administration for a micro-business, which is an owner, uh, counting as an employee, all the way up to nine employees there. Uh, so that was, that was our recommendation is if we are going to limit that top end and we want to be cognizant that this is a finite amount of funding and that we, we might have a real strong demand for this, especially initially, that we would want to have some type of eligibility criteria. Uh, to Rebecca's, uh, point about the full-time equivalence, uh, in lowering that down to, again, a sole proprietor on up to nine employees, we, we weren't comfortable that we would be able to make a good determination of what a, a full-time or part-time was. So any employee is going to count, whether they're a full-time or a part-time to that. Uh, to be honest, I hadn't thought of if someone had more than 10 with, with full-time and, and part-time, how that would, uh, affect this. So, so right now, I guess, um, I, I, I feel like it's going to be difficult to figure out the full-time equivalent piece and how many people are working how many hours in the limited amount of time that we, uh, are going to have to review these applications and get them back into the board for a, uh, final approval. Um, I also just want to point out that there was quite a bit of discussion about how, you know, this will affect the, you know, the ability of a small business with more than 10 employees to apply and be eligible at this point. And we would like to, uh, you know, review that in the future here and see if, uh, if there is opportunity and resources that might be available to allow for folks that have more than this full-time, more than this 10, uh, employee limit to, uh, to take advantage of this. And I don't think we're really going to know that until after we get through the first or second round of, of this, uh, as far as the demand for the product. So I guess my suggestion would be at this point to leave the eligibility criteria as they are, describing a, a micro-business as we have a federal definition of that. Um, and then maybe to refer this to the Community and Economic Development Committee to do a, uh, a review of the program and how it's working and the applicants that we're seeing, uh, prior to the second meeting in May. And then to be able to come back, uh, after that, see if it's, you know, if it's necessary or, or people feel best that we make some, uh, make some other changes to this. Uh, I also, while, while I'm talking here, I'll just go into the other piece. We, we did make a small edit to the, uh, the loan term for the $10,000 loan. And, uh, that was just to kind of clarify that that would be a 3% annual interest repayment. Uh, the term of, of two years or 24 months from the award didn't change. I just felt like that was going to require some, uh, some explanation the way it was previously written. So that was the other change that was made there. And then there was another addition, uh, just in the policy describing that if, if a small business got a negative recommendation from the RRA, they would potentially have the right to appeal that decision to the Board of Aldermen for, uh, for a final decision there if they so chose. So again, with, uh, a limited amount of time here, I'll, I'll end there unless there are some other questions about the changes.
Alderwoman Humphrey?
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to comment that, um, with the change to, uh, well, I'm, I'm comfortable removing what was that, finding, um, full-time equivalent employees because we're not stating full-time employees is just any employee at this point. My concern though is that I, I did, um, think that bringing the top end down from 50 employees was a good idea, particularly in the first round of this, um, kind of running the scenario through a business like Phoenix Books or something like, as Rebecca mentioned, um, going from 50 all the way down to 10 does seem like a significant jump. And I know that you base that based off of, um, a definition of micro-business, but I'm just wondering, um, if you start off with 10 with the intention of, um, using this for businesses of fewer than employees in the first round, but then opening it up later, how difficult are we allowing this to be fluid enough to change it going forward by including that language of fewer than 10 in the, in the policy? Or should we, um, maybe put that up? Find some other definition to increase that somewhere between 10 and 50?
Well.
Sorry, I have a bit of an echo. I was distracted as I was speaking. I hope that was articulate.
So this is Brennan. I'll just respond to that, Melinda. So again, you know, we, we could have picked 12, we could have picked 15, or we could have picked, you know, 20. I think, uh, we really tried to land on a, a definition of a I think we really tried to land on a definition of a type of business that was going to be in need here, and that's why that micro business definition was utilized. Again, I I feel like it's a reasonable place to start with this. And then as we kind of see what's going to happen here over the next month or so, I think we're going to have a better idea of the timing that these businesses are going to have this negative impact. And I think then it might make sense to revise the the policy and make it more of a small business. We could remove the term micro business from the title at that point if that was the way we went. If we are going to make, if the board's direction is they would like to increase that number to a higher number of full time employees, that's that's okay. We could do that. It would require, I think, or it would make sense to to change the title again from micro business back to small business or just business.
Alderman Humphrey, you have a follow up?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm just, process wise, I'm just trying to think through how this would work because I think it might be fairly simple for us to go back in and and change and update it and kind of bump the number up in the policy going forward. I'm just wondering if the first round of applicants, I mean, if we change the the size of the business going forward, we're going to have to, folks will have to apply all over again? Or would we include applicants from the first round as well as welcome a second round of applicants? I'm just kind of curious how that would work and if we're if we're making it more difficult.
You are.
I'll I'll try to answer that, I guess. I I mean, I I guess, again, I would suggest that we start with this definition of a micro business and we put this out. We have at least two rounds of ability for these businesses to apply, get a recommendation from the R R A to the board, have the board make that final approval of these, and then revisit this again, maybe a month from now, where we have a little better idea of where this is all going to end as far as the business protocols. I don't think it would be hard at that point to make those changes and invite a larger pool of applicants in if that's the the will of the board. So yeah, I I guess I would suggest, again, using that terminology for the micro business for the the next foreseeable funding rounds.
Thanks, Brennan. Just on that, I I would, I guess, I unless somebody else presents something different, I would agree with with the fewer than ten that you have now. With and I think maybe even if we start with a smaller businesses first, that might give the larger businesses, they might have more information when they do apply to a a second pool of funding based on other state or federal funds available. So that might help us help inform our decision later on better, too.
Yeah, it might. And and I will just add, there are, as I mentioned in the committee meetings, some federal programs that have become a little more flushed out here in the past week. So there is, through the CARES Act, a paycheck protection program with the ability for businesses to apply for a significant amount of funding, two hundred fifty percent of their current payroll as a forgivable loan potentially. So that's a avenue certainly we could steer larger businesses into in the short term, and that's done through their actual business lenders at this point. And then the S B A directly has what's called an economic injury disaster loan program, which would also offer some ability for relief there alone to help people make it through, you know, this this month or two months or three months that it's going to be. And so those are two other resources that I know we would certainly try to steer any potential applicant that was, if the if the short term not eligible for the city program to apply for immediately through either or both of those S B A run programs to help them find funding.
Alderman Mattis?
Yeah, I'm just going to argue with myself here and say that one, another good reason to just keep the number of employees under ten is that in limiting the pool to a micro business, we're going to probably be getting requests for more of the five thousand dollar loans instead of the ten thousand dollar loans, I imagine, which will spread our amount of money across a greater number of businesses. So that's a good argument in favor of starting with the micro businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. I I would like to agree and argue with myself as well. Alderman Mattis's point, the the first one and the second one are are the quite are some of the thoughts that I had had with this, as well as Alderman Humphrey's points. I I want us to make sure that we are saying to all of our businesses, we want to help you through this. I think that what then we have is the practicality of we're putting a hundred thousand dollars into this and we have a lot of businesses. We're not going to be able to fund all of them. So how do we, you know, how do we start this? And so I think Brennan's suggestion of starting with the micro businesses and reviewing it within a month, within six weeks or so, allows us to say, okay, you know, we were able to get out this money to people who, you know, five or ten thousand dollars will really make a difference to a smaller business. But then says, you know, we could open it up to more, we can welcome people, welcome people to keep their businesses going by applying for some of these funds. And I think if we also get the message out there that all businesses located in Rutland City can, you know, talk with the R R A and talk with Brennan and get information about the other programs that he mentioned, the E I D L, the P P P, whatever other programs might be out there, that we're here to help. And maybe the first option for some of them is some of the the funds that might have bigger caps than a five or ten thousand dollar loan. So I'm supportive of how how we are with the caveat that we send this back to C E D to review within a certain timeframe. And I would, you know, whatever the the pleasure of the board is, whether that's four or six weeks. I would appreciate that. So I will amend, I'll make a motion to amend the motion that we, there's a couple of different parts here, and maybe Bloomer's got to weigh in. We need to take some of the changes that Brennan has suggested about the language. But then I also want to add in the piece that we will refer this back to C E D to be reviewed before a certain date. Thanks.
All right. So we have a motion to amend and a second. Is there any debate on the motion to amend?
Does anybody know what they're voting for? Because I don't.
Right. I don't think we have original motion on the floor.
Yeah. Can we, can we get some info from Bloomer?
I mean, I always think it's unless they're unless the things are contingent on each other, so unless Chris's motion is he's not going to agree to any of the new changes unless the board agrees to send it to committee, it's usually better to at least separate the motions, probably for Henry's ease and for everybody else's. But if but if that is the case, that he doesn't want to vote for them unless it also gets referred, then you can do it the way that you did it. You probably want to just, you know, start with the documents that were were distributed by Lisa earlier in the week and then add whatever changes you are, you want to add that Brennan has since sent out. And then if you want to add the third part about it it being referred to C E and D, you know, that that would all be fine. I I mean, I think we all know what what we're talking about, but I don't know, for probably the minutes sake, it might be good just to at least broadly say which which of Brennan's additional amendments you want to add to your motion.
Alderman Davis?
So I think Matt and Brennan, I think I'm feeling comfortable that we move to approve the business incentive and assistance program, micro business emergency loan provision as presented, including the new amendment or new adjustment that was sent today to go from twelve to twenty four months. And then I think the motion to refer the issue to community development, economic development for further discussion as the loans, at least we'll have some information at that time, hopefully by May or mid-May, as to what businesses were able to take for what dollars amount and what is out there going forward. That would be my suggestion. I will move that motion.
Can I just? Matt, can I just quickly clarify that the suggested change from this morning was was not for the term of the loan to twelve to twenty four, it was just clarifying the interest rate was three percent interest annually as opposed to the point two five per annum. So that that was the the small change there, Sharon.
Going from mute to unmute seems to be a problem at this time of the night. So I'll apologize for reading that incorrectly. So I would just, if I may, I would just restate that I would move for the approval of the business incentive assistance program policy for micro business emergency loan provision as presented.
All right. We have a motion seconded. Uh, for the Alderman deploy.
Brennan, I'm sorry. Did you say that the the proposal is now at three percent instead of point two five?
So so the explanation there is we had a point two five per annum, which was the way I had intended that to be per month. So the point two five times twelve months is three percent. So that's the same amount. It would be a three hundred dollar repayment of interest on a ten thousand dollar loan annually.
I understand now. Thank you. That I I thought it was point two five percent annually and not on a monthly. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
All right. So a motion has been seconded.
Can you ask them just to take the thirty second timeout? Can you mute that second?
Yeah, one moment.
No, it was seconded.
Okay, I thought I heard Henry say he needed a second for it.
That's what I'm doing. So if you understand.
So just in confirming with the clerk, we're trying to clarify whether or not there is actually a second, it's still an amendment. Sharon, Alderman Davis's motion, the the final motion and second, is very similar to the first, but we're unsure if we resolve if there was a motion to amend.
From a Tore and Mattis.
No. No, if you thought there was not a motion, an official motion there, I just said a bunch of words.
Well, it was seconded.
Well, a bunch of words don't make a motion, though. So if there needed to be, then I would withdraw that motion.
And and that's what I'm trying to make sure, that there's clarification that we don't have three potential motions out there with no resolution to two of those motions.
Right.
At least withdraw ours, too.
I think that Alderman Ryan's original motion, seconded by Alderman Davis, has to be withdrawn and the amended is withdrawn. And now you have basically Alderman Davis saying that the that the motion is as presented, which I believe is coming from Alderman Ryan's report, which does stipulate the three percent if I'm hearing all this correctly.
I can withdraw my motion if the original motion captures the approval. I I guess I would ask that Alderman Ryan reread the motion, if she would please.
Point of order, Mr. President. It can't because we had the got the documents after the committee report, right? I mean, after the committee met was when the committee report came out and the motions that were made. We received those documents, so those have to be an amendment to the motion that was on the floor, I would think.
So we have the, so we have the original motion with as amended by Alderman Davis to include the the information that's been presented in the long run.
The three percent.
To include the three percent change.
I think if Alderman Ryan rereads the motion, at least we'll, then we'll know we have to include that amendment.
Alderman Tore to accept their emergency buy up loan provision policy as presented with the changes of removing and changing the language around the number of full time employees. Motion was seconded by Alderman Davis, passed five oh. Did everyone hear it?
Just trying to be clear. Attorney Bloomer, would you like to share your advice with us?
Well, I think there's a couple ways you can do it. One way that I just suggested is you could just vote down what came out of committee and then have Sharon put her her motion on the table after that because I she's referring to documents that, you know, were not, as Chris Tore said, not in existence as of the committee vote. So I think it's okay to amend the the committee's vote to change it to what she has put on the table, or if if that's too confusing, you could just vote down what came out of committee and then have her put her motion on the table to be to be voted on as its own own thing.
It doesn't matter, whatever they want to.
So right now, we have a motion out of committee that is the seconded. Alderman Mattis?
Sorry, it just seems to be so complicated and strange to vote down a perfectly good motion. Can't Lisa just withdraw her motion? Chris can withdraw his motion to amend. Sharon's motion was perfectly good and Chris can make his motion after that. It seems to me that's going to be the easiest and simplest. That's all. Thanks.
Alderman Tore?
I think that the piece is that it was a committee, it was a committee record, a committee vote. So I don't know if one person can redraw a committee vote.
Alderman Grusso?
I just want to say that we talked about this for fifty two minutes the other night and nobody's listening to Brennan. Brennan said, we don't know, the future holds a lot that we don't know about. I heard it said tonight by Alderman Davis and others. So we all agree on it. I don't know why everybody's spending so much time talking about the unknown. The thing is, is just, we don't know. I mean, don't don't feel bad. I'm not beating anybody up, but there's nobody here that knows where we're going to end up in a few months with the way things are going. So don't sweat it because we can change it later. But thank you very much. I just, I hope you heard it there, Mr. President, but I just saying, we spent a lot of time on this and no one knows where we're going. We gotta, I don't know, anybody take it? We gotta, I don't want anybody to take it personally. It's a tough, tough time. No one's ever seen anything like this right now. And I think, Mr. Duffy, you want to do what you want to do, we support you.
Alderman Humphrey?
Thank you. I think so. The recommendation, the motion in committee is presented to us tonight as a recommendation to the full board. Okay? Um, and then, but we don't have to make that a motion. If Lisa said and I so moved, then we can just ask her to draw that like Alderman Torey said. And then as Alderman Davis said, then she can just start a fresh motion. We don't have to vote down whatever came out of committee. We can just, that's a recommendation that came out of committee and we can end that report there. We, the, no motion needs to come out of that committee report.
Nobody made it.
Okay.
Happening in the committee is a recommendation to the full board. So now we can just start with Alderman Davis's motion.
I need to withdraw mine.
Uh, Alderman Gill, you have a point of order?
Motion on the floor, am I correct? From the committee? Is there a word right now? Okay.
Yes.
We should, we need to disperse with that one way or another and then amend it or whatever you need to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think if Alderman Ryan just withdraws her motion, we can go forward.
Technically, technically, I don't think she can if you're asking the parliamentarian.
Exactly.
So just treat Sharon's motion as a, as an amendment because none of us are going to be able to remember what she said if we try to do it again anyways. So just treat hers as an amendment. And if everybody's good with what she said, vote that as an amendment and then you'll have to vote it again to actually pass it.
Correct.
Have Alderman Davis reread her amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion, it's been seconded. Alderman Davis offered an amendment. Alderman Davis, could you restate your amendment, please?
Yep, I just need to, um, find the paperwork here now. Okay, so my motion is to approve the business incentive and assistance program policy, micro business emergency loan provision as presented.
I'll second.
Alright, we have an amendment that's been seconded. Is there any debate on the amendment? Alderman Torey?
I mean, that was the motion. Right? Or the amendment was to do the 3% and the whatever else that, uh, Sharon said the last time.
Right, but that's as presented with the policy that we have now.
Oh, as presented with the new policy versus the presented, as presented when we, when we had committee meeting. I'm clear.
Any further debate on the amendment to amend the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Amendment carries. So now we have Alderman Torey.
Nope, sorry, not yet.
Uh, so now we have a motion and it has amended to pass the buy up loan provision policy presented with changes. Um, it's been seconded. Is there any further debate? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Alderman Torey, it's your hand.
Motion to send the buy up emergency loan provision to community economic development with a committee meeting to be scheduled and reported out before the May 18th board meeting.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Is there any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Matt?
Uh, we are moving. Brendan, yes, go.
Can I, uh, can I just add two, two things to this? Hopefully not to complicate it. I wanted to make sure that went through. Uh, in the original motion and the motion that just passed, there was no, um, no funding mechanism identified or, or amount. And I, I know the $100,000 was the proposal of the RRA. Uh, I just want to check and make sure that we don't need to add an additional motion that, that clarifies that that $100,000 from the buy up balance will be used to capitalize this initially.
No findings.
If that's not necessary, then that's even better. No, okay.
Attorney Bloomer? Perfect.
Uh, it's probably safest to do it. I don't, I'm trying to look at the documents real quick to see whether what was just adopted kind of covers it. But by the time I do that, it's probably just as easy for someone to put a motion on the table to, um, to do that and, and just have it, have our i's dotted and t's crossed.
So moved. Second.
Second. Who was that?
Bill made the motion and Alderman Davis seconded. Uh, we have a motion that has been seconded to specify the funding source for the buy up emergency loan. Is there any debate? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you, Brennan. We are now on to reports of select committees. There are none.
Matt?
Reports of representatives.
Matt, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm having some technical difficulty here. It looked like it just froze for 10 seconds here, so I didn't hear what happened. And then I have one other topic that I think is applicable to the emergency loan program that we should talk about.
Uh, we, we took a vote to specify the funding source for the emergency loan program. And that passed. So, yeah, on view. What do you got?
Thank you. So, so the only other piece of this that I think we would ask the board to, uh, to give some guidance on, uh, and this probably relates more to, uh, Attorney Bloomer, who is going to be asked to draw up the loan agreement that's going to be utilized for this. Um, and that has to do with whether we as a city are going to be seeking any type of personal guarantee for the loans. Uh, when the RRA had this conversation, we were in favor of not asking for a personal guarantee as collateral against this loan for these troubled small businesses, feeling that that would be, uh, you know, a, a potentially, uh, disadvantage, disadvantageous for them and the business owners as they try to get through this turbulent, uh, area we are in. So again, I know Matt is going to have to craft this before the 20th when we start to get applicants and, uh, cut checks. And I just wanted to make sure that the board, uh, was okay with that recommendation from the RRA or would we like to have that included in these agreements?
Alderman Mattis?
Um, I certainly agree that, um, there shouldn't be any collateral. I think it's in the spirit of the loan and the spirit of the times to, um, help these small businesses in any way you can. And I, I think Brennan, you spoke to this when we met on this last week, that, um, we are taking a risk and it's a risk that we're choosing to take. So I, I fully support, um, your idea to leave collateral out. Thanks.
I agree.
Great. Again, I just thought that was probably important to clarify for, for Matt's purposes when he creates the, uh, loan agreement because that is something that's currently in the buy up forgivable loan. Thank you.
Thank you, Brennan. Alright, so we are on to reports to select committees. Uh, there are none. Reports of representatives. We have none. Petition letters, miscellaneous communication. We have nothing. Board of Control Commissioners. We have nothing. Unfinished business? Alderman Torey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, at our last meeting, we, um, set the public hearings for the master plan. Um, one, I, we, uh, there was, they were developing some guidance on that and I don't know if our, uh, rep to the planning commission, um, has any information about that piece, um, whether or not we still have to make that same timeframe. But we, um, for those of us who have looked at that and read that and been part of that process, there is a lot of, a, a lot of material in the master plan that this board should review and have a conversation about and not wait to the public hearing or, or not have it at that public hearing that's only set for 15 minutes. Um, there's a lot of conversation and debate that could be had about the master plan. Um, I thought we had sent it to committee. Um, and so, um, I would like to do, I would like to, to be in committee. But I do think we need to know whether or not we still have to make our June 1st or whatever that deadline is. Um, so, um, I will move to send the master plan to, I'm going to ask actually Alderman Davis to tell me what committee that should go to.
Uh, it can go either to general or community and economic development. But I will, I will say if I could, just so you're aware, that those public hearings are planning commission. The board, it gets referred to the Board of Alderman. We will also have our own public hearing, imagine, at some point. So the opportunity for board discussion still exists. That timeframe is not short.
Yes, if I can, the, we set our public hearings at our last meeting. The planning commission had had theirs about a month ago. Um, so the two, uh, meetings that we set were, were, are ours. Um, but I think that there's more than 15 minutes worth of conversation that we should have about it. Um, so I would like to move to send the master plan to general committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'll wait for debate.
Our motion has been seconded. Alderman Davis?
I, I know that we, I recall, I think that we asked Barbara to see whether there was an opportunity for relaxation of those dates. So I think if we could ask the chair maybe to follow through, uh, with, to see whether has been any.
I, I can give an update on that, Matt.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sir.
So my understanding, and this just occurred about a week ago, was that the, uh, the legislature has enacted a ability for all of these plans and, and things that are out there with timing to be delayed by, I believe it's 90 days. Um, I would advocate however, that we had, uh, we've been working on this for, uh, a good part of a year here. And that if it's possible to continue on the timeframe that was originally laid out, I think that is for the best and to try to complete this before, uh, before June 30th and get it readopted in that timeframe if, if that is possible in these uncertain times. I think that would be for the best. And I, uh, I appreciate Mr. Torey, uh, sending this to committee because I do think there is, uh, quite a few things that, uh, should be talked about and discussed in the current version.
Alderman Davis?
Well, just a question, I think, uh, I, I don't disagree. Um, I'm glad it's going to committee. I just think we need, um, at least I don't have, and maybe it was sent to us and I didn't download, but we need the complete document. Um, and I don't know if that's been, uh, sent to the board. Um, if it has, I think we need to resend it. Um, uh, or if the, the chair or, uh, the clerk sends it out to us, mails it out to us. Um, some of these documents are enormous to download. So I would appreciate that maybe the clerk can assist with that and possibly, um, so we can start reviewing it.
Uh, clerk act will resend the document to the board members. Uh, so we have a motion that's been seconded to refer the master plan to general committee. Uh, is there any further debate? And I've just lost my video, so you're going to have to shout it out if there is. Hearing none, all those in favor of referring?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other unfinished business to come before the board? And again, just shout it out. I don't have video. Alright, hearing none, miscellaneous motions, resolutions and new business?
Mr. Chairman. Alderman Davis, just a question. Um, basically, I think for committee chairs, um, I had a conversation, I guess with, um, Chair Whitcomb about this and I just kind of want to state it that, um, I will touch base with Chief Co-Cullen and Chief Lovett in regards to the public safety. And I don't tend to have a committee meeting unless it is required, um, a motion, an issue is requiring some action because I think it's kind of difficult to, to function in this manner and especially with public safety with what the emergency, um, committee is doing at this time. So I just wanted the board to know that out there. Um, I think there's only one issue currently in public safety, which is dealing with the alarm system. Um, and then I just will ask that Chief Co-Cullen or Chief Lovett, um, contact me if an issue needs to have resolution. So I just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions or new business?
I do.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, I just need to make an announcement that the Loyalty Day Parade has been canceled for this year, unfortunately, because the kids have been out of school and I believe we pulled the permit. So that will not happen this year. And second, uh, the solid waste district is not accepting any hazardous waste until further notice. That's Gleason Road and all the towns from now till June 30th. Those are just announcements.
Thank you, Alderman Gill. Any other motions, resolutions or new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you.